Call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Fledge of Allegiance.
My Fledge of Allegiance is in the flag of the United States of America and here the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call roll please.
Vidae?
Here.
Rosak?
Here.
Crouch?
Here.
Scarborough?
Here.
Merrill Lantz?
Here.
And then I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the agenda. Rose. Uh, then we'll move to public comment. Anyone like to address the council? Please step to the podium, state your name and your statement.
Hello, my name is Christine Stapleton. We live at One Center East Bronson Street, and we still have a problem with the traffic in the alley going way to the west.
Ma'am, before you go any further, I want to ask Jeremy to give you a couple of things.
I apologize, I'd give a recent tip.
Okay.
It will be on the agenda to return to a one-way alley in January. We didn't make this agenda, but it will be on in January.
Okay. But I do want to draw attention to there's ice, like it's pretty thick going, you know, one-way, and there's a house there, and it blocks the sun from melting it. I know it's going to get warm, but, I mean, we saw somebody slide through, and they went right out in the traffic, and luckily, nobody was coming, so. And my other question is about the shrub, the shrub slash tree, whatever it is, in front of 1121 North Bloomington.
Well, we've got, and it's covered for now, and it is on our property, so we're trying to deal with the, with the neighboring corner.
But it blocks.
It, it blocks, it does block the view, you're right, so.
Okay. Thank you, Merry Christmas, everybody.
It'll be one-way, just like it used to be, one-way heading to the west. You'll only be able to go west.
Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas, everybody.
Me too. Anyone else? That's the rest of the council. If not, then we'll move to the agenda, new business. Item one and two. David, do you want to make any type of statement on these?
Well, uh, the, the city council had two meetings, reviewed the requests from the city departments, as well as discussed with our finance officer, the budget for fiscal year 2020. The city operates on a calendar year budget system. Uh, that begins Jan. 1, and then it's December 30, uh, December 31st. The, uh, the proposed budget was, uh, available for public inspection here at City Hall, uh, per statute, and, uh, the city has, um, published, uh, an agenda that makes, uh, following statute, so that the council can take action on it tonight. The budget itself is a two-inch-thick document. The, uh, the major theme is that the city continues to experience within its general fund, uh, significant financial issues, where our expenses over the past couple of years, uh, continue to outstrip our revenues, and that's projected, projected to continue, and that we need to develop a solution. Part of that solution, I think, needs to be a significant reduction in cost. Most of our expenses are related to personnel, so, uh, we have had discussions at the prior committee meetings about developing an early retirement incentive program to try to induce current employees to retire. Uh, the city does have collective bargaining agreements with both, uh, the police and fire unions, as well as, uh, within the public safety departments, and, as well as other unions within the city, and, uh, as part of those agreements, there are, uh, there may be minimum staffing requirements, and so, uh, we will, as part of, uh, shrinking the, the headcount, if you will, uh, we'll need to negotiate with the unions over minimum staffing and how the work will actually get done. The terms and conditions of employment are subject to collective bargaining. We're currently negotiating contracts with both the police and fire unions, so it's, it's an issue that, you know, that we're, we're dealing with as we speak.
I'd entertain a motion to open a public hearing regarding the proposed budget fiscal year 2020 for the city of Streeter.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, call roll please.
Vidae?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lantz?
Aye.
Uh, now we'll move to, anyone like to comment at the public hearing regarding the budget? Hearing none, then I'd entertain a motion and to close the public hearing. So moved. Joe, second?
Second.
Ed? Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll please.
Vidae?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lantz?
Aye.
Then we'll move to item two, and I'd entertain a motion to approve and adopt an ordinance authorizing the fiscal year 2020 budget for the city of Streeter. So moved, Jeremy. Move on Mr. Rosak, or you have a second?
Second.
Second. Brian, is there any other discussion?
Your Honor, I'd like to say a few words, if I could, please.
Okay.
And I know I, I've said this many times before, and, and I'll keep saying it, but I had serious reservations about approving this budget. Um, I know we have to, so I will vote for it because we have to pay the bills January 1st, um, but it is a work in progress. We can do things, you know, next year, but I, um, I would just like to say, because we're going at, uh, number three on the agenda, the levy, and at 4.81%, the taxpayers of the city of Streeter, and don't quote me the number, but I'm going to use the number 13,500 for the census, I think it would be somewhat in the ballpark. But it seems just like the people in the city limits are getting stuck with the entire bill again, and, uh, I know I keep pushing the half-cent sales tax, and, uh, I'm going to ask for it next year again, but, you know, with the half-cent sales tax going on a rough run, and I think that would completely solve our problems for the near future, would balance the budget, it would give us money to keep current staff, and it would pay the patched obligations, um, so, uh, I just wanted to make a comment that I do understand we have to pass the budget tonight, it's just I would like that, I'm definitely going to revisit that next year, I think. I talked to our city manager before, but revenue was just, we're bleeding, and, and we need some more revenue, and I think we should give the people a chance, because I hate to see the burden put on just the city of Streeter people. You know, there's 26,000 in this, in this area that shop in our stores, that use our roads, that use our services, and, and I would just, I'd like to make a comment, thank you.
Any other comments? Clerk, call roll please.
Vidae?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lantz?
Aye. Item three, is there anything you want to cover there, David?
No. Again, this has been, um, the proposed levy's been posted and available for public inspection. Uh, we are, um, proposing an, an increase in our levy by 4.81%, which will, I'll get the math somewhere, which is an increase over last year. Uh, the city had previously, for the past couple of years, attempted to keep that increase to zero, or next to zero, and, uh, but over time, our costs continue to grow, uh, employees through our collective bargaining agreement, you know, following the process that the state set forth, um, you know, the, the employee cost grows a couple of percentage points per year, and eventually, you know, we reach a point where, um, we just do not have the resources without a property tax increase. The other, uh, funding sources to the general fund are not adequate to cover that gap. Uh, we looked at increases even higher than the 4.81%, but we were able to bring it down below the 5%, which is a requirement for the public hearing, but we just had a public hearing on all of this. So, the 4.81% is what is included in the budget you just approved.
I'd entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levy for the year 2019, the principal of.
The levy's there for item number three, which is the, uh, tax levy for 2019, but it's called 2020.
It is my number three, you don't want to just rip.
Oh, no, it's my number three, not my number two, guys.
Number two.
No, we just approved the budget, number three's the levy.
And then we do the eight months.
And then we get it into the abatements.
So I'm right.
No. So, uh, the, the request should be for approval of ordinance number 29-32 for the levy assessment of taxes, uh, for the year, um, for the fiscal year beginning January 2020 and ending December 31, 2020.
I think I have your, I think I have your agenda incorrect. I do. Mary, do you have your agenda?
Well, I, I got one here. I mean, I got all kinds of options. Enough ones of that, but.
So if you want item number three, it's Streeter.
Okay. This is the ordinance 2019-32, right?
That's correct.
So then I'd entertain a, a motion.
And ask for a motion, Mr. Mayor, for a motion to approve the tax levy.
Levy and assessment taxes.
That's all you need to say.
Okay. For all, for first of the city of Streeter, LaSalle, Livingston Counties, Illinois, for the fiscal year commencing on January 1st, 2020, and ending on December 31st, 2020. Have a motion, please. So moved. Okay, Brian?
Second.
Ed, any other discussion?
I just wanted to thank you guys for working on this. When we first got this, and we looked at the 10% increase on, uh, levy, just to keep up with everything, I about had heart attacks, so, um, because I didn't know that, mostly the council doesn't think that's acceptable, so thank you for working and, and getting it down to the 4.81. That, that 10% would just be just to keep up with the increased costs for this year, so, um, there's cuts to be made, but I just wanted to thank you guys for all the work you put into it.
Clerk, call roll, please.
Vidae?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Present.
Is that aye?
Present.
They'll be marked, uh, if the, if the carriers will be marked as, as, as.
Merrill Lantz?
Aye.
Do you have a question? Yeah. So mark, and just present when the council can find their call.
I'd just like to add then what, a little bit to what Joe said, you know, I mean, we'd be constant, and we'll be doing this budget as we go through the year, and looking for everything else, but, sources of revenue are extremely difficult, and it'll be becoming harder and harder for all of the municipalities. Recently, some municipalities now are in the process of selling off part of their sewer system, privatizing it, to get money, to get out of debt. Another community, and this one is, I don't know where this one's going to go, but a 1% push tax. That means that the player on video gaming machines, every time you hit the button, it's a 1% tax. Now, I don't think that will fly, you know, at state level, but a community is trying that out, to see whether or not they can make additional revenues for their community. And that just assumed in the last, I think, 48, 72 hours. All right, now, we're on number four.
Yes, number four. So this should be ordinance number 2019-34.
Right. Okay, I'd entertain an ordinance abating, uh, motion to abate the tax heretofore levy for the year 2019. The principal, is that one, or am I off?
No, you're right.
You're right. Levy for the year of 2019, the principal of, and the interest on $3.2 million general obligation bonds, alternate revenue sources, series 2015 of the city of Streeter, LaSalle, Livingston Counties, Illinois. That's, is the city hall renovation. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Vidae?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lantz?
Aye.
Now, number five, right?
Aye.
Entertained a motion to approve the ordinance of 2019-34, abating the tax heretofore levy for the year 2019, pay the principal of, and the interest on 2.34000, general obligation bonds, alternate revenue sources, series 2016B of the city of Streeter, LaSalle, Livingston Counties, Illinois, and this is, uh, North Point Plaza. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Brian? Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Vidae?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lantz?
Aye.
Item six, entertain a motion to approve the ordinance 2019-35, abating the tax heretofore levy for the year 2019, to pay the principal of interest on 1,485,000, general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue sources, series 2017A of the city of Streeter, LaSalle, and Livingston Counties, Illinois, and this is the 2006 park improvements. I have a motion. So moved. Second. Ed? Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Vidae?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lantz?
Aye.
Item seven, entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2019-36, abating the tax heretofore levy for the year 2019, to pay the principal of, and the interest on 1,325,000 general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, series 2017B of the city of Streeter, LaSalle, and Livingston Counties, Illinois, and this is Tiff Projects.
So moved.
Tara, does she have a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Vidae?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lantz?
Aye.
Item eight, entertain a motion to approve the ordinance 2019-37, abating the tax heretofore levy for the year 2019, to pay the principal of interest on 585,000 general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue sources, series 2017C of the city of Streeter, LaSalle, and Livingston Counties, Illinois. This is the library expansion. Library expansion. So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Vidae?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lantz?
Aye.
Item nine, entertain a motion to approve the ordinance 2019-38, abating the tax heretofore levy for the year 2019, to pay the principal of, and the interest on 2,500,000 general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue sources, series 2019 of the city of Streeter, LaSalle, and Livingston Counties, Illinois, and this is the South Industrial Park factory.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Vidae?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lantz?
Aye.
Item 10, entertain a motion to approve an I dot highway permit to allow for the construction of the center street sewer project in the city of Streeter. So moved. Second. Okay, Mr. Rosak?
Aye.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Vidae?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lantz?
Aye.
Item 11, entertain a motion approving, appropriating $13,000 of MFT funds in connection with the roadway maintenance projects for the fiscal 2019, for the maintenance of streets and highways by the city of Streeter under provisions of the Illinois Highway Code. I have a motion. So moved. Ryan?
Second.
Joe? Any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Vidae?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lantz?
Aye.
Item 12, entertain a motion to approve the meeting and holiday schedules for 2020. So moved. Ryan? Is there any other discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Vidae?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lantz?
Aye.
Item 13, entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2019-39, providing for the submission of a binding question of whether the annual library tax for the Streeter Public Library in the city of Streeter should be increased from point.
It should be zero. It should be 0.15.
Yeah, 0.15 to 0.23% to appear on the ballot of the electors of the city at the election to be held on March 17, 2020. I have a motion, please. So moved. Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, call roll, please.
Vidae?
Aye.
Rosak?
I'm Steve.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lantz?
Aye.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with a fund warrant total of 1,632,927.45. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussions? Clerk, call roll, please.
Vidae?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lantz?
Aye.
Tara, is there anything?
I just wanted to thank the Christmas parade committee and Light Up Streeter for all their work to get everything, um, lighted and, and nice looking this year, so. And there's a lot of volunteers that, that work on it, so, appreciate it, and it's enjoyed by many.
Good. Um, yeah, she said exactly what I was going to say, thank you, but, um, I still want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, this is their last meeting of the year, hopefully, something else comes up, and, uh, enjoy your holidays, everyone, thank you.
Just like to thank all the volunteers from the Light Up Streeter, they did a wonderful job, and a lot of hard work went into all that, and, uh, wish everybody a Merry Christmas and happy new year.
Um, kind of like, uh, I know we talk about taxes and stuff, but, uh, I think the city, you know, sometimes people doesn't look at it as a whole, uh, the city's cut of the taxes isn't a what? I mean, it's, it's, you have District 40, District 44, there's a whole bunch that makes the tax break, or the tax rate so high on your bill when you get in the mail, and you get that sticker shot, but it's, but it's always the city of Streeter's property taxes, but, you know, people do need to remember that it's, it's not our, it's the collective group's money, and, and sometimes we get a bad rap for that, so, um, I would encourage everybody to shop local for Christmas, so we can have your sales tax money, and support our downtown businesses, and, uh, just a Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you.
The police chief provided an memo to me today concerning, uh, his department's response to a citizen who appeared before the city council at a prior meeting, and, uh, with truck traffic on East First Street and, uh, by North Lawn School, I believe, and so I'll copy it and, and provide it to the council. They've had a number of instances, you know, one, two, three, 10, 15, probably, where they were out there watching for trucks and didn't see any, but then they, uh, they put a camera up, and they're continuing to follow up. They did find one truck and issued one ticket today, so, and they're, uh, planning on continuing a fairly aggressive enforcement program. This problem is probably not only isolated to this particular street, and so, as other streets, if there's other truck traffic, then we can continue a more aggressive truck enforcement program to protect our streets, protect our neighborhoods. But I'll, I'll scan this document and get to you, give you an email.
Over the weekend, I had an opportunity to, uh, talk to a, a couple of individuals whose ancestors settled in this area in 1835, and, um, the comment that they made, and they've not lived here anymore for several years, but periodically, they do get back to the community, and they were, uh, extremely complimentary of what has been happening, you know, with the community as far as, um, the downtown area, the city park that's, was lit for the holidays and stuff like that, and I told them, I said, "That's the result of volunteers in this community," and we acknowledged them a little bit here tonight, but I don't think you can ever thank them enough, the volunteers that, um, do things for this community, and many of the things that individuals do for this community go unnoticed, or at least it's not acknowledged, because people don't even realize what they're doing, because they're not asking for any type of recognition, they're just wanting to do what they can to make their community a better place to live, yeah, and I think that reflects well on a, on a community that continues to, to survive for, you know, 200 years at least, so. With that, I'd entertain a motion for a term. So moved. Joe?
Second.
Second.
Brian? Any discussion? Clerk, call roll, please. Clerk, call roll, please. Last time, Mr. Mayor, Vidae?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Lanceford?
Aye.
Stand adjourned.